Yeah, there we go. All right, I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting for October 14th, 2025. The time is now seven o'clock PM. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silent meditation. Okay, we will start off with the roll call.
Mayor Nickel.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Gerton.
Here.
Councilmember Dyer.
Here.
Councilmember Nutt.
Here.
Councilmember Rumi.
Here, Rumi, sorry.
Also in attendance, City Manager Coffey and City Attorney Bone.
Okay, on item number five, which is additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda, if any, does anyone in council have anything they want added or changed? Hearing Nutt, we'll move along to item number six, Presentations, Proclamations, and Introductions. We have a Police Department introduction and an oath of office that will be carried out by our Chief of Police, David Butler.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Council, for allowing us to do this. I think this is a great opportunity for us to be at the very beginning of an officer's career, welcome him to our family, the Indian Harbor Beach family, and let our citizens get their chance to be a part of that as well. So first, I'd like to introduce, we have two new officers here today to swear in. First is my lady saint, Officer My Lady, come on up. All right, just a little bit about, a little bit about her. She was born and raised in Broward County. Now, correct me if I mess up anywhere along the way. After graduating from Coconut Creek High School, she attended Broward College, where she earned her Associate of Arts degree and a Bachelor's of Applied Science degree in Supervision and Management. She has always been drawn to law enforcement, as she has worked in administrative roles at the Broward County Sheriff's Office and at the Palm Bay Police Department before she began her career here with the Indian Harbor Beach Police Department. She attended and graduated the Eastern Florida State Police Academy. She was actually recruited by one of our own police officers, Sergeant Wimmer. More specifically, Sergeant Wimmer's wife recruited her to come work for us. So she gets the day off if he's here. If you speak, if you just speak with her for a second, you're gonna, you'll immediately recognize she's highly driven to succeed. She's, she's going to be successful. She is married, she has two children, and she just started her FTO with Corporal Malagon. We expect great things from her, she's going to do an outstanding job, so welcome. Okay, and who do you have is gonna pin your badge on?
My husband.
All right. Introduce your family real quick. Twenty-seven, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, going to raise your hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, my lady saint.
Solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Support, defend, and comply.
That I will support.
In the United States.
With the Constitution.
Constitution and laws.
The Constitution.
State of Florida.
Of the state of Florida.
Charter, laws, and ordinances of the City of Indian Harbor Beach.
The Charter laws.
Rules and regulations of the Indian Harbor Beach Police Department.
The rules and regulations.
Police Code of Ethics.
And the law.
Faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will.
As a police officer to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Everybody has a problem.
All right, next, Jeremy. This is Officer Jeremy Verhagen. All right, Jeremy was born in California, but was mainly raised in Arizona. After graduating from Florence High School in Arizona, he attended the University of Northern Florida on a full scholarship to play basketball. Upon graduating from college, he, he earned his Bachelor's Degree in Sociology. Upon graduating from college, he entered the business sector, didn't really find, find his passion there. Coming from a law enforcement and military family, he was always, again, always drawn to law enforcement. When he and his wife moved to Brevard County in 2025 to be closer to family and to start his new law enforcement career, his aunt was actually the one that recruited him to Indian Harbor Beach Police Department, so gotta, gotta love that. When we first did the interview with him, you can speak to him for just, just a few seconds, he's extremely professional, he's going to be an excellent fit here, we think he's going to be a great police officer, and just soon as we interviewed him, we're like, yeah, that, that's the guy for the job. He had, he had, he also attended the Eastern Florida State College, where he graduated with Officer Saint. Jeremy is married, he has three children, right? He is also in field training with Corporal Reynolds, and we're confident he's just going to make an outstanding addition to our Indian Harbor Beach family, so graduation. Your wife? Right, come on up. Hand, aye, state your name.
Aye, Jeremy Verhagen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Support, defend, and comply.
Support, defend, and comply.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
State of Florida.
State of Florida.
Charter, laws, and ordinances.
Charter, laws, and ordinances.
Of the City of Indian Harbor Beach.
Of the City of Indian Harbor.
Regulations of the Indian Harbor Beach Police Department.
Rules and regulations.
Law Enforcement Code of Ethics. And faithfully discharge my duties. Police officer to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
This is Gabrielle, my wife.
I just want to thank Council for allowing us the opportunity to do this. Both these guys are going to do a great job hiring police officers. It's, it's a long process to get them to this point, trying to find highly ethical people, that's what we look for, obviously. Both these guys are extremely highly ethical, of great character, and we think they're going to do a great job with us, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, on item number seven, approval of minutes. It'll be approval of the regular City Council meeting minutes of September 24th, 2025. Does anyone in council have any changes?
No changes.
No.
Any changes, I'll sign those into the record. That was the first one, and then the second one is to approve the e-bike workshop minutes from September 24th, 2025. Any changes?
No.
No changes? All right, I'll sign those into the record. All right, on item number eight, first item under, number eight is City Manager's Report, City Manager Coffey.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, residents here and at home. A few updates on projects, the east side of Gleason Park irrigation expansion project. Earlier this month, staff signed the attached bid resulting in a savings of $2,443, which will be transferred to the contingency account. Last week, staff signed the attached bid for the, the phased police replacement project resulting in additional savings of $2,600, which will be transferred to the contingency. Recently, Police Chief Butler applied for two grants to offset our operating costs. One is an FDLE drone grant, which would purchase our drone and provide training, and another is the FDLE JAG surplus funding grant that we submitted costs of one of our replacement vehicles. So I'll provide updates as we receive information on the award of grant decisions when they, they arrive. The City Hall Baffle Box, RFP for Construction Services, was released last month. The summary of dates is provided, the closing date of that is November 4th, with the ultimate consideration of award of contract scheduled for January 13th. The fire station annex request for qualifications for architectural engineering services was also released on Thursday, October 9th. Closing date, that is November 10th. As that is an RFQ, a consideration of the ranking of the firms is tentatively scheduled for the December meeting with award of contract planned for the second meeting in January. The August Fire Department Code Enforcement and Fire Inspection Reports are attached. Public Works Director Scaldo and I received some thank you cards from Ocean Breeze Elementary School students that are attached. I thought you'd like to see the budding artists in our community. And the next regular scheduled meeting, we have Veterans Day proclamation and public hearing, second reading for the micro mobility, and the ordinance for first reading of the final budget amendment. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next is City Attorney's Report. Okay. On to Council comments, does anyone on council have any comments? We'll start with Deputy Mayor Gerton.
I attended the Space Coast League City's meeting last night, and the main presenter, basically dealing with aging matters in Brevard, he had a presentation concerning the need for either people that can help with services or can help financially. We have evidently a big population that people that are in need, and of course, there's a waiting list to go ahead and get the services, that type of thing. So anybody that can help find a way to go ahead and do that financially or service-wise would be greatly appreciated. Waiting list for people to get services, I think, what was it, about a year?
Yeah, well, it's over, it's over 300 that are on the list right now, and 75, I think, are on the critical need list for food.
So it's, it's a project that'd be well worth it.
I couldn't hear. What services?
It could be anything, like you go Meals on Wheels, or, you know, there's a gamut. I, I'm not up on everything, other than we can give you a contact person to go ahead and get ahold of.
We can get you a contact name. I presume that they, I have not personally been on a website for them, but for Aging Matters is the name of the organization. And I think if you look into that, they are in desperate need of, like Frank said, either, either funding or, or helping with meals, helping with just general everyday things. Yes, you're welcome. Okay, Councilmember Nutt.
I want to say thank you to Councilmember Rumi and Chief Butler, along with our Public Works Director Todd Scaldo for coming for the workshop we had last night. And I know you took a little bit of heat, but at the same time, everybody stayed professional, and, and we were able to answer quite a few questions, and you made yourself completely available to the citizens that showed up. We have some that showed up tonight and, as well, so I just want to make sure I gave you guys a big thank you, and I appreciate you showing up for that.
Councilmember Rumi.
Well, I'm thrilled to tell you people have been using the cleaning stations at the beach. However, some people did go home with the buckets again recently, but I think it was to escort turtles to new places. So Lowe's will be donating another bunch of buckets that will hopefully stay a little bit longer. The local artist, Arian Bosnart, will begin painting the pipe at Gleason this week, it's going to look really good. And also just want to thank Chief and Todd Scaldo for having, it wasn't so much a meeting as just a community gathering last night, I thought it was really good, people got to speak their mind, a lot of questions were answered, so I thought that was a great thing, and that'll do it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dyer.
Just to piggyback on your question, ma'am, it's also volunteers, the Aging Matters of Brevard, they also really are short on volunteers, and volunteers would be delivering those meals, and then after time, they start building some of those bonds and relationships with some of those seniors that don't really have anybody else that live in the area, so that's another way, if, if anybody feels they have the free time to do that, that would be awesome. But other than that, nothing to report.
Okay. All right, and yeah, I think you guys have covered everything that I would have said. Move along to public comments, this is on non-public hearing agenda items only, if anybody wants to speak about. Non-public hearing items, things that are on the agenda but aren't public hearings, you can come up and state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Otherwise, we have a public forum towards the end of the meeting that you can also speak. Seeing that, we will move on to, actually, item number 10 on the new business, item 10A is first reading of ordinance number 2025-07, which is Micro Mobility Regulations. And I will turn it over to our City Clerk, Nikki.
Ordinance number 2025-07, Micro Mobility Regulations and Ordinance of the City of Indian Harbor Beach, Florida, adding Article 7 to Chapter 19 of the Code of Ordinances of the City to be known as Micro Mobility and Other Devices, providing for definitions, providing for regulations concerning the operation of micro mobility and other devices on municipal streets and other areas, providing for penalties and enforcement, providing for severability, repeal, and codification, providing an effective date.
Thank you. City Manager Coffey.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On September 24, the city council held a workshop about micro mobility devices, i.e. e-bikes, e-scooters, battery-operated mobility devices. The city council provided direction to staff regarding drafting of an ordinance. City Attorney Bone developed initial draft that was reviewed by Police Chief Butler and I. As required by Florida statutes, a business impact estimate is attached. If approved on first reading, the public hearing and second reading will be on October 28, 2025. Staff recommends approval on first reading.
Okay, thank you. I read through the draft ordinance, and I think it captured all the items that we spoke of at the workshop, the general consensus that we had at that workshop. Honestly, didn't see anything that concerned me. I know there may be folks here tonight that want to speak on this, or want to speak for the public input portion of our agenda, but in general, I thought it was very well done and captured everything that we talked about. Frank, do you have any comments?
No comment.
Councilmember Nutt.
No, I think it actually, it meets everything we discussed in the consensus that we came up with, and I just want to make sure that the residents that we do have here that may have any concerns about how this ordinance is going to, we need to have the ordinance prior to us actually being able to enforce anything. So that's what we're trying to do right now, and the enforcement will come after. This actually gives the chief a little bit more legality as far as doing, stopping people that aren't actually doing what they're supposed to be doing. They're doing 25 miles an hour on a sidewalk, that kind of thing. So I want to make sure that you're fully aware that there's the enforcement side of it comes next, but right now, I think we got the basics down exactly where it needs to be. Appreciate it, Scott.
Councilmember Romi.
So I just have a couple of questions, coming from a house that has e-bikes and all that good stuff. Carl, where, I'm still confused, where does the Razor or the Rambler, which are non-pedal electric bikes, fall when they go under 20 miles per hour? Or maybe that's a chief question, I'm not sure. Sorry, I promised to ask this, so.
So, the way I understand it, it would be considered a micro mobility device, and if it goes under the 20 miles an hour, like you said, it's actually 28 miles an hour, it's an e-bike. It would fall under the e-bike category.
Even if they can't pedal on it?
Correct. It becomes a micro mobility device.
Okay.
So yes, it would fall under, it would fall under that. Now, if it goes over 28 miles an hour, then it's an off-road highway motorcycle.
So those, just to be clear, those rechargeable Razor motorcycles that you can just charge, those, I guess they're legal under this?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other thing I just wanted to ask about was the Class III e-bikes being 16 or over, I see it's in there.
Yes.
So we have one, and I'm not fond of it, but I will say my son's really careful on it, so I'm just worried that putting an age on it, I'm finding that the younger the kid, the more they actually follow the rules, so I'm just questioning putting 16 years or older for that.
I think we had discussed that, and I thought that was council's suggestion at the time to do that, and that's the only reason it was put in.
I understand.
Right, Carl?
That is correct. You know, once, like I said, once they're 18, they're adults, so we kept it at that age, and I think it's, and it's also fairly consistent with what the state statute's requiring as well.
State statute does not have an age requirement for Class III. Just the definition of a Class III. They don't have, yeah, but they don't have an age requirement for the Class III.
No, that is correct, but by state statute, we're allowed to implement those types of restrictions on micro mobility devices.
I can't help but wonder, is there a way to do this without the age restriction? And if everyone feels differently, that's fine.
We can remove that section if the council chooses to do.
Yeah, I just, I see a lot of these kids, that the younger they are, the safer they are, so I don't know if I would do the age on this.
Just so the stuff isn't tied to this, I mean, we incorporate everything you guys were talking about, and that's what we did, so, you know, take out the red pens, that's fine.
I think you did a great job.
I was at the school today to speak to what you just said, and all the kids were wearing their helmets, and I was, they're actually driving by, "I'm only going 10 miles an hour, officer, on the sidewalk." They know, because of what Officer Jen did, they know what the rules are.
Yes, they definitely do.
Councilmember Dyer.
Yeah, this is a tough one. I know that majority of cities across the state are trying to tackle the same thing, and there's so many different, you know, vehicles or vessels that fall into this category, so it's very challenging to come up with an ordinance to kind of like, you know, hit all those. I do understand what you're referring to as far as the age, but I'm personally okay with the 16, the age limit, because, you know, typically, I do see most of those bikes that do go 30. I know that those are the ones kind of driving a little more recklessly personally, but that would just be my opinion. I do think the city did a good job of collectively taking what we talked about in the workshop, and thank you for showing up and giving your input, and I looked at the ordinance, and I didn't see anything jumping out, so, good job.
Just to, it only goes 20 miles per hour, that's the maximum, it doesn't go higher.
I thought it was 28.
28.
Oh, that's what I meant to say, 28. No, you just had said in the 30s, I'm just saying they can't go above 28.
Yeah, 28, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry, my speedometer's off.
If I may, you know, a lot of this was taken from the presentation and the information the chief developed at the workshop. We developed this ordinance, I don't know that there's another one like this. I mean, we took bits and pieces from the Cocoa Beach and the Palm, but this is ours.
Yeah, there's not a lot out there.
No, there is.
I mean, there's just not, this is pretty brand-new, and I think that we have to look at this as, like all ordinance is, when they're brand-new.
Correct.
This is our, kind of our first go at it. So it is, I would not be surprised to see us talking about this over the coming years to refine it and work on some things that, you know, maybe don't work well, or things that we can add to it to make it better, so.
We can remove that section, like Carl said, pretty easily.
Are we addressing anything in here with anything that's over 750 watts? It's over?
I'm sorry?
That, are we addressing anything in the ordinance about the electric vehicle, e-bikes that go, that have over 750 watts, or that go way over 28 miles per hour?
Carl, correct me if I'm wrong, but you referenced in there the statute which deals with that, so it would fall under the statute.
It doesn't fall under Class.
So it's under, it's under page one, the electric bike there, it says, "What is an e-bike?", and it talks about what the wattage is there. But we don't say, "If it's 800 watts, then it's illegal," or?
Right, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comment? How does council feel about the age restriction? Adam, you've kind of said your piece on it. Frank, thoughts on that?
I think it's a growing thing, and we're going to make changes, you know, future, and I'll go along with Susan.
I'm not a fan of the 28, anything over 28, or at the 28 mile, the Class I and II. Yeah, and...
Yeah, it's not an easy...
It's really not, because there's a fine line there.
Certainly sympathize with your situation.
I do.
But also, the thought of a kid that's 12 years old or 10 years old on one of these things going 28 miles an hour.
Already having issues that we're having concerns with kids that are under the age of 16 operating low-speed vehicles. So I think that we kind of need to have that mindset when we're establishing an ordinance for the e-bikes. So I'm in the mindset that the 16 needs to be set for at least the faster of the three when it comes to Class III electric bicycles. So we're going to end up having to, this is going to come back and bite us when we start doing the low-speed vehicle issues, with the age restrictions, obviously, and that's my thought.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, but I have to go with my gut feeling on this. I'd rather err on the side of safety on this. I have no doubt that your children are wonderful on their e-bikes, but I have seen some that are not, and it's kind of scary to see them weaving in and out of people and pedestrians, and it can be downright dangerous. And I know we've got, we're establishing a speed limit on sidewalk usage, I think it's 10 miles an hour or something like that, but that's assuming everybody complies with it. Ultimately, we're looking to safety issues and injuries, and I'm feeling like we have to go in this direction, so, be my thought on it. So with that, I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 2025-07, establishing regulations for micro mobility devices.
Motion by Councilmember Dyer, second by Councilmember Nutt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Nay.
Motion carries. It's okay, say nay. Motion carries 4-1. Yes, you may.
It's very difficult to look at an e-bike and say if it's a Class I or a Class III, because they look the same. The only way you would do that is if you actually had a reason to pull them over and actually kind of look at it. So it isn't like we're just going to be pulling e-bikes over and inspecting them and getting driver's licenses and all that good stuff. We're just going to, if it becomes an issue, then that's when we would be enforced, which is not arbitrarily going to be stopping everybody that looks under 16 that's driving an e-bike, because you can't tell the difference really, so. Correct, correct, exactly.
Okay, on to item 10B. This is award of contract for the Algonquin Sports Complex West Side Multipurpose Pathway. City manager Coffey.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The FY26 proposed budget contains several ancillary projects to complete the Algonquin Sports Complex Expansion Project. I've listed them, I will not read them all for sake of brevity. The largest one is a multipurpose concrete path on the west side to connect in with the pathway that will be constructed on the east side. In accordance with the city charter, invitation to bid was advertised in Florida Day in the month of August. Three bids were received. One, very low, that we don't believe is a responsive bid. Of the two remaining bids, both have done work for the city. Adrian Turnball is the lowest responsible bidder, in our opinion, so therefore, staff recommends city council award of contract not to exceed $138,000 to Adrian Turnball Construction, Inc., to construct an eight-foot-wide multipurpose path on the west side of Algonquin Sports Complex, and authorize staff to transfer the balance of the budget to contingency. I will add, one caveat is Mr. Turnball, if he receives this contract, plans on doing the project after he completes the Osceola Sidewalk Project while he waits for school to finish up to do the Yuma Project.
Okay, thank you. All right, yeah, I looked at the bids, I agree, the one bid that was very, very, very low, it appeared that they had some quantities that were not accurate, they kind of missed the target on that, so I don't think it was representative. So I would tend to agree that Adrian Turnball is the appropriate recommendation. Anybody else on council have any comments? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to award a contract not to exceed $138,000 to Adrian Turnball Construction to construct an eight-foot-wide multipurpose path on the west side of the Algonquin Sports Complex, and authorize staff to transfer the balance of the budget to contingency.
Motion by Councilmember Romi, second by Deputy Mayor Gert. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. All right, item 10C, installation of speed pumps, speed bumps on North Osceola Drive. City manager Coffey.
In September, a resident who lives along North Osceola Drive requested, through Councilmember Nutt, the city install speed bumps due to concerns of speeding. Per established procedure, Chief Butler initiated a traffic calming study, which will be completed shortly. There was a traffic calming study done previously on that street. Subsequent to that, Councilmember Nutt requested this topic be placed on this agenda for consideration. To aid in council decision-making, the attached traffic calming information is provided. Staff request direction.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Nutt, you brought this to the agenda.
As I was doing my rounds, making sure I hand-delivered the notifications to the residents on the east side of Osceola for the sidewalk expansion, I spoke to several residents that their main concern was the speed because of the new park going in. We already had some issues and complaints that the chief has taken when it came to that being used for the sports, obviously, for the parking, and people going back there. Obviously, sometimes they're late, sometimes they're not, but they're definitely doing more than 25 miles per hour in that short stint there. I'm not a fan of actually the speed bumps as much, but I wanted to make sure I addressed what the citizens were asking for. I did talk to the chief about it, and he came up with a great recommendation, which I liked, which is a rumble strips, is what they call it. If you've been on 95 and you hit that one section there as you're going north, and it'll give you, that's it right there. So it'll give you an idea of exactly what it feels like, so it's a warning, it's a mitigation. So it gives us some type of mitigation to slow people down, along with, I wanted to make sure that we could put some verbiage out there, instead of it saying curve, it would say slow. I know that we already have a sign up there that says kids playing, but it's just not enough. And yes, I know that we are having a study done right now, a calming study that he's doing, but that's neither here nor there, because the gates closed, we're not having the activity going to the park as of now. So I would like to see something done, because this is an ongoing issue, it's been since before we started the park project. So I'd like to move forward with something to try to mitigate the speeding on that road, especially, I got one house on there, Jesse, who has six kids in one house, and I have friends here, the Josephs, that have children, right there at the end of the house as well. But it's, it's going to make, we need to do something. I'd rather be proactive than reactive.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to do some, I'm going to do this a little bit differently than normal, even though this isn't a, is not a public hearing. I do have a speaker card, one speaker card here from Mr. Joseph. So if you'd like, if you want to come up, since we're talking about it now, it's better than us, you talking about it after we've made a decision. So you would, state your name and address.
Joseph Joseph, 118 North Osceola. So we live at the end of Osceola where this is, it's, as we've lived there seven years, it's really a one, two-day-a-week problem during spring and fall during soccer, for 30 minutes, 5:15 to 5:45. So if you're going to put a speed bump in the middle of the road, we're all going to suffer year-round from that. Now, if you want to put a speed table at the gate, getting into the park, and blow out the people's suspension doing 40 doing that, I'm all for that. But... But I don't think it will help, really, the, the problem during the, either way, put a cop, if you had a cop there a couple of weeks and you actually gave out tickets, you know, week one, you just, you know, told people, hey, slow down, week two, they don't, you start giving tickets, that'll change people's behavior. But I don't think a speed bump would really change people's behavior.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, just a, a point of clarification, speed bumps are what you see in parking lots and areas like that. Speed humps are for public roadways, traffic tables, et cetera, those are traffic calming devices. So definitely a speed bump is, that's a no-go for a public road, that's, that's not a recommended thing. And when I say recommended, I'm talking about the Florida Green Book, and they have all kinds of regulations about that. So, and also, one of the things I do not recommend is rumble strips. So I, I'm not, I don't have an opinion on that, per se, but I'm just telling you, I looked at it today, and I was like, oh, interesting, because I know they have rumble strips right there by Mather's Bridge, and when you approach, approach it coming from the north to the south, right before the bridge, they have them there. But anyway, I, you know, personally, I would like to, I, I get the dynamic with you, right now, we don't have the park open. Chief's doing a study.
Had it up there for, from September 1st to September 15th, roughly. So roughly three weeks, we had about 7,500 cars go through there, which seems like a lot for, especially when they're not, the, the gates hasn't technically been open, but there's a lot of traffic with the construction and whatnot. The average speed was 14 miles an hour, and the 85% speed was 19 miles an hour. So basically, 90, 99.2% were obeying, obeying the speed limit, so 5,100 vehicles were doing that. 8.8% was going over the speed limit, and then of the eight, we could have wrote for citations, because you got to be over 30 miles an hour to get a citation. So we would have, we would have wrote for citations during that time. So it, it is, I know we've, this is similar with the, the previous study that we looked at. I, I know we have had multiple complaints from citizens out there. And then I, I'll give you the whole report next week, I'll have it all written out, but those are just the basic preliminary numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Yeah, so I would like to, first of all, wait until he has completed and formalized that report. I do, I would want to see a stepped-up enforcement. I'm not sure, you, you might be able to even coordinate with Kristen to determine when the activities are, are happening there at the park. Probably a good idea, because I've seen it too, my kids used to play soccer, and I've, I've seen plenty of people, like, as you said, they're late, so they're, they're going, they're going pretty quick down the road. But I'd want to see the results first. I think some stepped-up enforcement would be a good thing. The more they see that, the more serious they see that you are about it, the less likely they are to speed. If you, I mean, if you look at, I'm not saying we should carry it to this extreme, but if you travel down to Melbourne Beach, you know what I'm talking about. If you go down to Spencer Holland Park down there, the, the Flutie Complex, it's, if you're going up, the speed limit's 30, I don't even go 31 on that road, just because they're very proactive.
What, what they, I went out there, when I was doing the study, kind of examined the, the street and whatnot, and what I did, noticed there was no speed limit signs from North Osceola to the entrance of the park. So we have two speed limit signs on order that Todd's going to have up hopefully this week. And then, do you, you also know that we get two electric speed signs every year? So we're going to order that, I've talked to City Manager Coffey about that, and we will place one of them there.
Yep, that makes sense.
To try to alleviate, at, at least let people realize how fast they're going. I, I know that that has worked pretty well in the past, and we've got, I want to say, half dozen of them up right now, and we will add that, we will add that, that, to that location.
Okay.
So Mayor, I, I'd like to see the study done when the parks actually open, and I think that would be more.
I agree with that, and I think.
Yeah, I think we need to wait on that for, so we get, but in the meantime, like you said, we're doing, we're going to take some steps.
This is just preliminary.
Preliminary things.
Do some preliminary steps, let them finish this report. No, it's a no-brainer that when it comes time for that park to actually open, we see all the activity happening, let it open for a little while, get past the honeymoon period, honeymoon phase with it, and then do another study. I think that's what we need to do, because it's going to change the dynamic of the traffic in the area, for sure. And, but, you know, I think there are things that can be done to mitigate this. You know, as you, as you pointed out, Mr. Joseph, about, you know, you, you put speed humps out there, I know that's popular, but, you know, then the residents are having to deal with those way more than the occasional visitors. And you have to be prepared for that, you have to be careful what you ask for. So it may be something where, as you pointed out, something very near or very close to the entrance, so you get past all the houses, and the locals aren't, the local residents aren't having to deal with that as much. Yeah, not, not a bad idea, anyway, slow everybody down as they're coming into a parking lot, you got a bunch of children running around, it's probably not a bad thing to do.
We'll do that, sir.
Yeah, and I agree with it. I mean, it's, I'm not a fan of the speed bumps or humps, and I've gone through that discussion with John and also with the chief about it, but I wanted to make sure that we brought this up, because I drive that road, and all the time, that's how I get home, and I don't want to have to go and have to go over those speed bumps like they are. But, like I said, I'd like to know what your opinion is when you said something against the rumble strips, because that's a very simple, mild thing in comparison.
It's something to, it's something to, to consider, but again, it's not that, it's not that mild. So I drive Tropic Trail every single day, to and from, and when I come home and I get, frankly, when I get to Mather's, I come, when I approach it, I look around the corner, there's no cars coming, I'll do a little thing just to go around those things. Because as, the slower you go, the more abrasive they are to your car. And again, it goes to, also goes to the residents. How much are you guys going to want to drive over those things? So, I mean, personally, I'm open to any idea that makes sense, that doesn't present a safety problem or anything like that, of course. Something we can, certainly something we can look into.
Yes.
It is specifically identified as a not, not a recommended improvement in the Florida Green Book, but there again, that's, that is highway-driven, for the most part, it's more roads that are typically a little bigger, but it does reference collector roads, which basically you collect your road when it's really busy.
Yeah. Appreciate it, Mayor.
Councilmember Romy.
I agree with what you said, and with the following Chief Butler's study, let's see what happens, because it doesn't seem like a red emergency right there, to get it going, but let's see, let's see what happens, let's do the study.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think we should, you know, wait to see once the park's open, and then obviously with some increased enforcement on the road, and once the park is open, I'm sure there's going to be an increased police presence in that area on, during evening time, so that could potentially take care of some of those issues. And I do know, I believe it's Indian Atlantic and also Koga Beach have both recently put speed bumps in and then also removed them. So I, I'd, I'd want to not, not really put the cart in front of the horse, so to speak. So I would, I would be against the speed bumps.
Deputy Mayor Gerton.
No, that's fine. You know, the only place that I know of that's speed bumps, and that's the only place, and of course, they don't even have a single lane, really, it's kind of tight there. But I, I would think that North Osceola is an extension of, you know, speed zone, you know, from the school, that type of thing. I, I don't know why we can't step up enforcement when we decide what, what it needs to be as far as the speed there. You can, you know, we could bring it back down to 25, we could bring it down to 15, you know, we could have a, a camera there to go ahead and monitor speed in there, and, and make the speed limit whatever we want to make it, it's going to be safe. I think it, it's unfortunate that we think of a solution, rather way is speed bumps. The, the solution to me is, number one, having a reasonable speed coming into the city, South Patrick, we do on A1A, okay, that's a speed zone up there. We do need stepped-up enforcement when it's busy. We do need stepped-up enforcement at 4 o'clock in the morning, which we've had, you know. So we, we do need stepped-up enforcement where, where the problems are, that type of thing. And if we exhaust a lot, exhaust trying to educate our people, it will change. Like our mayor said, down at Spencer Holland, on that road down there, it's 30 miles an hour. And I guarantee you, if you go faster than 30 miles an hour, they are pulling you over, because I was one that was pulled over, okay? And I was pulled over 10, 12 years ago, okay? And the cop was very nice, he educated me in a good way, I, I wasn't going 90 or anything, you know? But, you know, he educated me, and whenever I go on that road, I have my cruise control on. Cruise goes on. So if I fall asleep in my mind while I'm driving, you know, that type of thing, I know I'm not going to go faster than 30, okay? And so we deal with it, we get warned, we know it's a serious thing, we'll, we'll accommodate, we will accommodate. Speed humps, oh gosh. The other stuff you got, noise, whatever you got, throw them out, because you're penalizing the people that drive well, okay? That's who you're penalizing, okay? And the 5% of the people, you know, you got the speed humps for, or 10%, whatever you want to call it, percentage was. That's enough.
All right. Well, it sounds like in, in general, we have a, I think, a consensus to do some proactive temporary measures of additional speed enforcement during selective times and days. And then redoing your study once the park is actually open, has been open for a while, and we can get used to the traffic action that's happening out there, and, and see what our real numbers are. And then once we do that, then we can see what an appropriate measure is for traffic calming in the area to improve the safety. So I will entertain a motion for this, so I, I guess, an action item, so is, can that just be consensus? Okay, we'll leave it a consensus, we'll do that, all right. I was feeling consensus, so. So we have consensus. All right. Item 10D, this is code enforcement discussion regarding existing codes recommended for updating. City Manager Coffey.
Mr. Mayor, earlier this year, city council held a workshop to discuss the state of code enforcement. Consensus of that workshop was to implement an educational campaign through the Harbor Highlight and begin stricter enforcement of city codes after a reasonable period. That stricter enforcement is scheduled to kick off next month. However, staff believes that there's three areas that the code should be revised, and those areas are boats and trailers, intersection visibility, and vegetation, tall grass. Chief Lewis has put together a very brief presentation for you, and if you concur with our recommendations, staff will develop draft ordinances for considerations at future meetings. Chief Lewis, there's a clicker up at the podium, so you can control the presentation.
Perfect. Thank you, City Manager Coffey, council members, and mayor for setting aside some time tonight to talk about some of the issues that we found in code enforcement. I also want to thank you and the residents for your patience and understanding while we build the code enforcement program from the ground up. We're looking at our processes, we're looking at our technology and our tools, and quite frankly, when we're looking at our code enforcement bucket, it's got some holes in it. We've prioritized those holes, and we're only looking at the biggest ones tonight, and we want to share with you what those look like, so we can develop a path of going forward and, and fix these issues. Boats, three current code issues that we found were boats and trailers, intersection visibility, and vegetation and tall grass, and we're going to take those one by one. Boats and trailers, the problem is that the current code language, we feel, is unenforceable. Give you an example, the way the language reads, the resident has a boat, they move it an inch, it's been moved, time starts over again, we can't put our thumb on it and say this is a violation. Our recommendation is to consider aligning our code for boats and trailers with that of RVs, because it's much more enforceable. And I'll give you example on the next slide. Our current boat language says, no trailer or watercraft shall be parked or stored in any residential zoning classification except to the rear of the front principal building line. Any such vehicles, regardless of their location, shall have attached at all times a current vehicle registration or license plate, or vessel registration, if applicable. Trailer or watercraft may be temporarily parked or stored on the paved portion of the owner's driveway for up to 48 consecutive hours. I'm a resident, I had my boat here for two days, I moved it, I put it right back. We've got, we've got nothing. But with aligning it with the current RV language, we also add a definition for our calendar week, with the first day beginning on Sunday and Saturday being the last day of the week. We changed the language, and we allow that trailer or watercraft to be parked two consecutive 24-hour periods within a calendar week, within intervening 24-hour period. And they're not giving credit for any portion of that period. Basically, you have a day to unload it, and then another day to unload it during that week. And if it's there beyond that, it's, it's a violation. Same thing that we do with our RVs. Questions on boats and trailers?
The mayor and Frank have been through this before, the rest of you haven't, this is, what the chief brings up is the same issue I brought up since, probably since 1990, with enforcing the parking. All I got to do is move it, put it back in, it starts the time, and if we're not monitoring that particular boat, trailer, RV, or whatever it is, for the applicable period, we can't refute anyone getting up there and testifying before the magistrate saying, I moved it. So it, it, it is a very large problem, as the chief pointed out.
This particular, so our intent for the, for the ordinance is to not have boats and trailers stored in driveways as a permanent solution. Intent of this language is not a permanent solution, you get two days a week, and that's it, and we can monitor those two days.
One of the things I would like to see, the opening sentence and the modification language says, no, no trailer or watercraft, as defined in Article 13, Section 16 of Appendix A, shall be parked or stored in any residential zoning classification except to the rear of the front principal building line, and I would like to see language added in there. After that, says, screened by a six-foot-high opaque fence, fencing must meet the requirements set forth in section, whatever the second, whatever the fencing regulations are. I, I, what I've seen is people skirting the intent of this by, if it's a corner lot, especially, they'll park it behind the front building line, but there it is out there in the side yard, you know, open to everybody. You know, I think that is, with the language the way it is, it still leaves that open to a certain extent. And I think, just like the RVs, they should be moved behind a screen, behind a fence. And I think, just like the RVs, they should be moved behind a screen, behind a fence. And so I would, I would like to see some language inserted in there to try to cover that, so that we can avoid having trailer boats on display all the time. I, and I get it, I get there's always going to be some enforcement challenges with this, but, um, requiring it to be behind a fence, I think is a, is, might not be a bad thing to do.
What, what I'm hearing you say is the intent is no boats in the front of the house.
Yeah.
With a house that has an L-shaped, uh, outline where your garage is turned, it's not flat, that garage that's bumped out becomes the front principal building line, and people are then permitted to park boats in their drive in the front of their house, because it's behind that front principal building line. And that's been one way to circumvent. So if that's the council's pleasure, we can add language to that.
So it's something I'd like to see considered. I mean, it's a, just my suggestion right now, uh, in terms of language that we could potentially add to tighten things up a bit. I think we're all looking for the same thing, we're looking for consistency. Uh, we're tired of seeing boats and trailers parked all over the place in yards and whatnot. The second question I had is, um, why not just make it a 24-hour period instead of having a 48-hour period? It seems like if you did 24 hours under item number two, maybe I'm missing something. I, I spent some time on this today, a little bit today, but it seems like it would eliminate , uh, items two A and B. I, I, again, I'm thinking in terms of enforcement, it may, may be cleaner, but Carl would probably need to think about that and see what might make sense. And if, does that help, or does that hurt?
Oh, is the 48 hours, is that the same as the RV ordinance?
Yeah.
All right, so that's the mayor, so we want to separate that between...
And that's the, I like the idea of going the general route of the RV ordinance, I, but I don't think it should fall under the RV ordinance.
Uh-uh.
It's different with RVs. You know, to me, people, they bring their puller RV up, they've got a full-on thing they've been going to orchestrate to get their RV ready, get it cooled down, pack it with a ton of stuff, and all so on. The typical boat that people are going to have at their homes in any harbor beach that are be trailered are going to be, you know, 25 feet or less, most likely. Um, and I don't see the prep time necessary for a boat like that as being two days to prep it or to clean it.
I'm in agreement with trying to get things tightened up here when it comes to the code enforcement, but, uh, I think 24 hours is kind of short, because I've, we've got neighbors around, uh, where I'm at that definitely have boats that are much bigger. And, uh, the main, the maintenance of them just coming back from a long trip, it takes more than 24 hours, for them to prep it, to put it on the side of their house. Um, and my, my problem I actually had, I made a complaint about someone I, that was just on the road, they had it on the road for so long, uh, in front of the house, instead of on the side of the house. Um, so I, I understand the issue, I completely understand, but I think, um, 24, maybe a little bit of a short side.
Yeah, and I'm not, I don't own a boat, I'm not an avid boater, uh, but, so I don't know, I don't have that experience, that personal experience as to what all it does take. But if it does warrant a longer period of time, then so be it.
Mayor, uh, can I have a question about the fence? Just clear, clarification, you're proposing it be behind the fence? Is that, is that what you said? I missed that.
Yes.
On the side? Okay. Um, I, yeah, I, I agree, there are some boats that are, that are, that are, you know, parked in front, and they're kind of unsightly, but for the most part, um, you know, this is, it's a boating community. So personally, I'm, I, I'm, I don't see the issue with parking a boat there, but also, I, I will tell you this, I do own a boat, and it's a 21-foot boat, and I can't get it on the side of, either side of my house, because there's eight, eight feet, and it's wider than that. So that, that, that brings up some issues there. Um, also, I think with the, the 24, two consecutive 48-hour periods with the 24 in between, there's also some, you know, if someone has time on their hands, which we all know, there are people out there, they can move for 24 hours in between, and therefore, then it starts it over. Um, so, you know, you chasing, chasing that, potentially, it, you could potentially go to like, uh, two complaints, um, within a calendar week, and then witnessed in that position by code enforcement, something like that. Um, just throwing that out there, because like you said, you put a boat out there for 24 hours or 48 hours, you know, you go pick up the boat, load it all up, sits overnight, go to leave the next day, you know, it, stuff, stuff happens, so. But that, that would just be my two things, my two inputs. So, I'd be against behind the fence personally.
My comment would be, uh, basically, it should be okay if the boat is behind the building line of, of the house. It's been like that for 50 years before I got here, you know? I would think, uh, if down the road, after we got some things settled, when I say down the road, five, 10 years, whatever, and you feel like you need to tighten it up more, and you got more people that are obeying things, because right now, people aren't obeying anything. We park cars on lots in front of the house, two, three, four cars, and been doing that. All you gotta do is ride around a little bit, you know? It's amazing, we park cars in the median, okay? Things like that. So when we get down to the fine-tuning, boden, I would be against that if it's behind the line, that type of thing. Give the resident a little credit for trying to do the right thing, otherwise, he would have had it in storage a long time ago, that type of thing, or sold it, one of the two. So I don't want to see us go that way, okay? But, uh, and let's, let's get the big eyesores and, and kind of work on that and manage that down. And then we can get into the finer things if we need to. But right now, it's deplorable out there. Just ride around, you can see it.
Hi, Chief Lewis. Um, I just want to ask, is the reason for this because you're seeking guidance on what to enforce and what not to enforce? Or is it because there's an actual problem of people complaining about the boats?
My guidance was to enforce the ordinances that are there.
Right.
And, and looking at them and actually experiencing from, from that side of things, we can't enforce it the way it's written, because of the, there's, the timer never, there's no hard stop time.
Right.
By aligning it with the RV language, it gives us a hard stop time. And if our code enforcement officer identifies a boat, doesn't identify an intervening 24-hour period where it's not there, and then sees, sees it again, then, then it fails the test, and we're able to move forward. But the way it's written, we can't even administer the test, because there's no fail point.
Understood. I, I just worry that a lot of residents are going to have a very hard time about adapting to where the boats actually should be. And I understand it's written there, but I think that's going to be, um, an issue. But I guess it's written, so we have to figure it out. I think we all know there's going to be some complaints about it, that's for sure.
Yeah, you're, you're just going to have situations with, again, typically on a corner lot, that's where that front building line issue can be problematic. Not everybody, I mean, it's, there's a few examples through, in, in the city that that's what we see, is they're, they're on the side yard, but technically, they're behind that front building line, but they're in front of their house. That's the way, you kind of, it stands out a lot more when it's a corner lot than a regular But that'll, I mean, that will leave it, that will leave it open if we don't do something behind a fence line. And Adam, I get it. I mean, I know the, the beam of a boat, a lot of times can easily be eight feet, and if you've only got seven and a half feet, you're not getting your boat on the side of your house. I can thought on that.
Is that something that we can do, Carl, as far as how, how the house is aligned, and the capability of the resident being able to do something like that? Because we're going to, I don't want to put any hardship on anybody to have to be able to not, you know, I don't want Adam to have to sell his boat because he's not in code enforcement, you know?
I store it, it's not in my yard, but go ahead.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, I'm speaking for other people.
And I don't want to, and the other thing you're talking about, fence putting, I know exactly what we're talking about when it comes to, uh, Pine Tree and Osceola, there's that one particular house there, and they got more, they got plenty of cars, they got plenty of, of driveway too, but they also have a trailer and a boat, and everything kind of got moved over to the side. It's, it's still in sight, I get it. Um, and I understand that. But as a, as a city, I'm not going to say, hey, look, you need to extend your fence to make that fit. Now you gotta go through that expense. Um, I think I'd rather take the code enforcement fine than have to pay the money for the fence, you know, as long as that goes, so, but...
But remember this, just so you know, on a code enforcement fine, the second time around, it's a repeat violation, now it's 500 bucks.
It's progressive, yeah.
Okay, so, the first time up to 250.
I understand, I understand.
But, but I, we're going to have to sit down and look at this corner lot issue and, and, and figure it out, and come up with a definition or something, because, um, you know, it certainly does create a bit of a loophole. There is, I don't know if you said it, or, or the mayor said about the garage on the side and, and all that stuff. So we'll, I, I, I think we can come up with something, but, um, it certainly addresses the issue. I mean, we had this discussion several years ago with the RVs. I think you might recall that, Mayor, and...
Oh, yeah.
So we had that discussion, and when we addressed it there, um, I'm pretty 100% with the chief, as it is currently written, it is unenforceable unless I'm going to have a code enforcement officer sitting at that driveway for, you know, a 24-hour period, monitoring the whole thing, and that's just not going to happen.
Well, that, that's also like, the way it's written, that would be three consecutive days that code enforcement have to drive by that residence, right? I don't know.
The, the way the RV or, ordinance works is, um, the police officer puts it into their CAD system, and then there's a reminder to go check 24 hours later. And if it's there 24 hours later, it's a ticket.
When we're looking at things like this, this is team effort between, between our agencies to make sure that things are as they should be. We didn't bring forward the issue of the corner lot, uh, because that, that in and of itself is thorny, but we can enforce, we can enforce it the way that it's written. We just brought forth what we couldn't enforce the way it was written as, as a starting point.
Okay, um, so, I think that we could potentially, if everyone's in agreement, of course, we can vote on this, um, we could go ahead and potentially move forward with the suggested language changes you have right now, um, because the other items are kind of separate items to discuss, and we can always amend the ordinance at another time, uh, once we've had more discussion about it. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
The, the language that...
Yes.
Yes. Frank, are you okay with that?
Where, where we at?
This is the language, the language, we're not do...
Where we at on the corner?
We're not doing anything with that, that's, that's for further discussion. But we're looking at potentially moving forward with the suggested language changes that the chief has proposed, which is really the time, it's more the time.
Yep, time in the, identifying a calendar.
I'm okay.
Susan?
You're doing a good job, Chief.
Adam, you good with it?
Yes.
All right, consensus it is.
Our next code issue is the visibility triangle at intersections. The problem, the way the code is written, it's currently unenforceable, and I'm going to give you an example in just a second. Our recommendation is going to be considering modification to allow for reasonable accommodation of existing conditions and common sense enforcement here. We're going to ask you to consider adding substantially obstructed visibility to give the code enforcement officials some, some leeway in, in looking at a, at an intersection and deciding whether or not it's substantially obstructed. And Chief Butler and I have discussed this, he's seen the language, and we're, we're in agreement. Altering the height to allow a tree canopy no lower than six feet. Right now, the current language allows for vegetation height no higher than two and a half feet. It doesn't allow for trees or any canopies. And then finally altering the triangle length, the length on the side of the visibility triangle, to go from 40 feet to a 25-foot minimum. And I'll show you what that looks like here in just a minute. Here is our visibility triangle, the way that it's currently written. Landscaping at intersection and points of right-of-way are restricted to 40 feet from the intersection on both sides. So if you take and mark from where the intersection, uh, lines join, go back 40 feet, draw the hypotenuse of the triangle, that area is supposed to be completely clear, only allowing for vegetation two and a half feet high. I can take you on a Google map, and we can go intersection by intersection, and three of four intersections will fail, because they've got 20, 30, 40-year trees that are in that visibility triangle now, that aren't substantially obstructing visibility, they just violate the ordinance. So what we want to do is, we want to take a look at those intersections where visibility is substantially obstructed, and focus on them. City Manager Coffee, could you pull up a Google map and start, drop a pin at Mohawk Way and Cheyenne, and we can walk along that intersection and, and give you an example of what we're talking about? And this no way singles out anybody there, it's just an easy one that we drive past. You take any intersection in the city, and you're going to see these same problems with mature trees in the visibility triangle, along with some other things.
40 feet from that, from that, from that triangle, on each side.
It's a long way back.
Yes, sir.
We have nothing. Correct. We did some research on this throughout the state of Florida, and there's no common distance there, it's all over the place. So we feel, from a practical point of view, 25 is a more reasonable length. I agree. You're on Cheyenne, if you'll go down Mohawk Way, you, that's it, looking straight ahead at that tree there, those trees are in the visibility triangle. This one, canopy itself is up high, the, the smaller tree may have it down below six feet, but we would ask that that be raised, so that you have visibility between that two and a half foot and that six-foot mark. That would put us in a much better position than where we're at today. And you can continue down Mohawk Way on both sides and at the next intersection and see Those trees there, they wouldn't fall. That area also.
Again, it's 40 feet along the right-of-way line.
Correct.
As opposed to, it's not the street, so it's even pushed back further into your property.
So we, we just want to bring an element of common sense and enforceability to this.
Yeah, the 20, 25 is a good thing to shoot for.
So our recommendations, again, adding substantial obstruct, substantially obstructed visibility, altering the height of the tree canopy to no lower than six feet, and alter the length from 40 feet to 25 feet minimum in the visibility triangle.
Yeah, I, I like that language, saying it would, it would have to have all three of... Yeah, I, I like that language saying it would, it would have to have all three of those to be considered a violation, right?
Correct.
So, yeah, I do like the language of substantially obstructed visibility. So.
Yeah, it's, I, I like the change. There are other circumstances aside from just intersections, though, that there's a couple of them. Like one, there's on Maica, Maica Drive, S-curve type road, set up Maica. Derby Road. That one in particular, there's a house on one of the corners that, a very sharp curve there, and they've got a lot of vegetation there. And so, you don't have the benefit of having a stop condition where you're rolling up to a stop and you can, you've got a little better opportunity to watch and look. That's, that's ripe for some kid be coming around the corner on a bicycle or, you know, the, on the wrong side of the road, what have you, and just you not seeing them, you know.
That happens often at Yuma and Marion with the abstract, I think I've mentioned.
Yes, there is. Top left of that image right there, in the middle now, right there. Zoom in. Nope, nope. Keep going, keep going up, up, up. Nope, other up, other way. Right there. Yep. So, right there where that loop driveway is, right there on that corner, that inside corner there. Further back, oh, that's right there. You're right. So, advance it a little bit. So, that's what I'm talking about right there. So, you have, you know, tons of vegetation there. And again, I like the language change here, but it's something that we need to also consider. There's, there's a few, I think there's a few roads in Indian Harbor that have a sharp enough curve to them that something needs to be crafted to address curved roads. And I know that's a, may not be an easy one to do, but.
Plantings in the right-of-way.
That's been a, and again, I'm not saying without the property owner, I mean, the vegetation looks great. But you can see the visibility issues that can occur as a result of something like that. It's going beyond the fence, right?
Yeah. And, and I know, I know it's, it's, I believe it's county area, but speaking of blind corners, I've, I've almost witnessed multiple accidents there going up WomenCo around to the library. That, that, that's, that's a terrible blind corner.
Could potentially do it. Has nothing to do with the, the visibility triangle per se, but at some point, double yellow stripe, those curves, just as a reminder for people to stay on their side of the road. That's what I'm concerned about is somebody cutting that corner, going that direction there, and then, you know, could have a situation, bad situation. So, food for thought. But some we should probably discuss more, not as part of tonight's discussion, but something to work on. All right. Everybody good with the language that is proposed?
Yes.
Yes, yes. All right, consensus, we have it.
Our, our final code enforcement issue that we prioritize to bring forward with to you tonight is vegetation and tall grass. We've got a couple of issues where residents claim natural vegetation or natural planting, and it's been difficult for us to enforce maintaining the lawn as it should be. So, what we'd like to do as a recommendation is consider requiring a permit for anything that's called a planned natural landscape where they would have to identify the plantings, get it approved by, get it administratively approved by staff or a committee, and be able to proceed before something like that's accepted in the city. I wish I could say that I come up with this myself, but I stole it off the internet from another community.
Chief, what's the, what's the current code on that that we have now? As far as the height that we just weren't enforcing that, I know that much.
We have an eight-inch height.
Correct.
But there's also state language about allowing for.
It's for natural vegeta.
Natural vegetation, wild, wildflowers. I'm sorry. That, that zero state is, coquina rocks, no vegetation, yeah.
And part of the issue is there's a few folks, we'll put it politely, who don't want to cut their grass. And when the weeds that grow up have any semblance of non-green color, they call them wildflower with no organization of just, if, if you stop, if you don't have a lush St. Augustine grass, if you stop cutting your grass, within six weeks, you're going to have some type of color in there. Most people don't consider that wildflowers. But the folks who don't want to cut their grass will quick to say, oh, those are wildflowers.
Yeah, we feel the people who have, have a vested interest in having a planned natural landscape and have wildflowers and that sort of thing, they know exactly what they're trying to put in there. And adding a little structure to it would, would weed out our issues.
But who would be the, sorry, who would be the committee to approve something like that? Like, would you do that? Would that be code enforcement?
I have no expertise in that. And I would be looking to have a, phone a friend, a committee, or someone else on staff that.
Maybe someone from the garden club?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Is, Mayor, is this something that the tree board can get involved with when it comes to native plants? And identifying it and coming up.
That makes sense to me.
We have some expertise on there. I know that.
You've got the expertise. So, that to me could make sense. I'm not sure exactly what that would look like.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be that they have to apply for it. And, you know, based upon their expertise and review of what is in anyone's, any given yard, offer their, their recommendation as to whether or not it's allowable, we call it deviation from the code, but kind of what it is.
You'd have to amend that tree aboard.
The ordinance would probably need to be, yeah, there'd be language in there about that. And that potentially the landscape ordinance itself would need to be amended to include language.
Language for guidance.
Natural plantings or.
And, and they would need guidance on, standards and guides. But is, if, if that's the case, which is fine, will the tree board be the final authority on that? No?
I don't think that would be a recommending board, just like a P and Z board would be. And I don't know if that would, what permit would be issued from.
Well, basically, my point is that we'll, we'll have to come back to council on the issue.
I'm just trying to make the tree board earn their, their space here, give them a little more work.
No, and that's fine. I mean, there'll, there'll be advisory capacity only to the council, and council gets to approve it. And then we issue a, a, a town-created, a city-created permit for it.
I apologize. I didn't have any language crafted for this. I was looking for if there was appetite, then we can move forward and, and put pen to paper.
That would make sense, you know, have, having advisory capacity. So.
Okay.
All right. Last but not least, I wanted to leave you on a very positive note. We have some code enforcement software that's coming that's going to increase our transparency into all of the code enforcement issues that are out there, not only for staff to be able to see and follow up on and set timers and whatnot, but the council will be, be able to see that also, as will our residents at home. If they want to look at any parcel or any property to see if there were any code enforcement actions initiated, or if they've had that in the past, that would all be, that would all be there. So, it's also going to add some operational efficiency because the app will be mobile. And from the field, you can initiate violation letters and all that stuff. So, we're very excited about that coming up.
And it'll also cut down on the phone call to me, email to you, phone call to Linda in back.
Yes, sir.
Of the tree.
You okay? Anybody?
Are there any questions I can answer?
Questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good job.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay. Item number 11 is public forum. If anybody from the audience wishes to come up and speak, please do so now. Come up, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to say your piece. Wait, maybe? Okay.
I'm Robin Garrettson. You want my address?
Yes, please.
1116 Seminole Drive. I had a couple of things, and probably a lot of them were the chief. But we have a real bad problem with the stop sign on Osceola and Pine Tree with people running the stop sign. Twice, I've almost been T-boned if I wouldn't have looked up twice. And I know occasionally I see the police sitting down the road from there. But it seems to be getting like vacation times and, and things where people are not from around here. And I, it's like I saw my life flash before my eyes the other day. Because if I wouldn't have stopped and looked again, the guy must, they had to be going 40 miles an hour. I would have been creamed. I would have been killed. The other problem, our e-bikes do not stop at these stop signs. And the kids on the streets, my street in particular, have those go-karts. And I know that the police have gone down and stopped them, but they will go flying down the road. And I, kids need to be outside, but it's dangerous for men. And I, I would just like to have a little more presence on our road for some of the kids. And I do have a question about the mini bikes, motorcycle things. I have a seven-year-old grandson who loves to ride his little motorcycle. And we take him over to, I guess, like by the library. Are those going to be permitted on these roads? It doesn't go very fast, but is that, I don't, I don't have those ordinance. I don't know anything. I'd like to have a copy of that.
Chief, you want to take a stab at that?
Yeah, it's one of those little motorcycles.
It's electric.
Yeah, my guess is it's going to be fun. On the road with, with us riding with him. He never rides it by himself. Oh, God. Well, some of the roads don't have, like, Seminole, we have no. Okay, I just want to make sure. We don't, we don't have the police scare him. It's an electric little. I don't know what the heck they're called. It has the little lights. It has lights.
I'm going to be on the sidewalk, right? Yeah, you'd be all right if it's under 10 miles per hour on the sidewalk.
Well, like Seminole, we have no sidewalks. And, yeah, he does not go anywhere by himself. I'd have to clobber him. Okay. Sorry. Okay, that was it. The only thing, is there a way for me to get the ordinance that is being proposed or has been accepted now on these doggone little?
It's officially finished.
Okay. If you hang around after the meeting, we'll run upstairs and print you a copy.
That would be awesome. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to come up and speak?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dyer, select by Councilmember Romi. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Does oppose, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. We are adjourned.